Whenever you're ready.
Okay, as is custom, let's see. Good evening, this is Enid Lapellis. Today is September 29, 2020, and it is 8:00 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Monroe Town Council. As is customary before the start of our meetings, would you all please join me in my allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Please allow me to confirm the presence of those town council members and any other staff or anticipated participants are present and are able to hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dee Dee Martin?
Dee Dee Martin here.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar here.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, present.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney here.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella here.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott here.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke here.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed here.
And myself, Enid Lapellis. Officials and staff that are present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. First electman, Ken Kellogg?
Ken Kellogg here.
Town Attorney Frank Leedo. Director of Health Nancy Ross. Community and Social Services Director Hannah. Police Chief John Salvatore. Emergency Management Director Dave York. Deputy Emergency Management Director and Police Captain Keith White.
Here.
Okay, Keith here. Parks and Recreation Director Missy Orros. And Public Works Director Chris Milwaukee.
I'm here.
Okay.
Missy Orros is here.
Okay.
Electman Kellogg, just so you're aware, before we move on, Terry did come. He's caller 05 if you wanted to update it for the screen.
Okay, yes, we heard, we heard. Thank you, Mr. Mauer. He did answer for the attendance. Hereby declare for... I hereby declare for this meeting. Copy of the agenda and any related materials have been posted to and can be found on the Town of Monroe's website, www.monroecenter.org for public inspection. This public meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B, dated March 14, 2020, using go-to-meeting electronic conferencing technology. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone using the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so please be sure that you have access to access the meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any... Access to this meeting using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on first-access basis and is not controlled by the Town of Monroe. It's anticipated that we will... This participant limit for this... It should be appear that we are... We set limits that any member of the public is denied access to this meeting. The chairman retains the right to... Continue later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. Please take notice the following regarding this remote electronic public meeting: One, that this meeting is being conducted in real time; Two, that this meeting is open to the public; Three, that any member of the public may listen or mute to this meeting anonymously; Four, that this meeting is being recorded, and while we ask that you mute your microphones unless recognized and speak, that anything you say, do, or display on your screen may become part of the recording; Five, that the recording shall be posted website within seven days; Six, that the recording shall be made available to the public within a reasonable time, in town hall or upon written request. As set forth on the agenda, this meeting will feature and permit public participation. Any written comments from the public regarding any business which would otherwise be germane to public participation and received between the date the agenda was posted through one hour before the start of this meeting will be read into the record during the public participation portions of this meeting. Ground rules to ensure the meeting runs smoothly, the comments are audible, and an accurate record is maintained are as follows: Shall follow standard parliamentary procedure. However, I ask all participants to follow these special rules in addition. Please mute your microphones so as to reduce background noise at all times when you are not speaking. Prior to speaking on each occasion, you must clearly state your name for the record. The use of chat features is prohibited and will not be considered during the meeting at any time. All members will have an opportunity to speak on agenda items, however, please hold your comments until you are recognized. Once discussion is complete or a vote has been compelled, uh, must be compelled by parliamentary procedure, the chair will call for a roll call vote on the motion. Before we start, I understand that Councilmember Reed wishes to make a motion regarding suspension of the rules of procedure.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to move that pursuant to Article 7 of our Rules of Procedure that the Town Council suspend Rule 13, which requires all matters relating to the general government of the town and all agreements to which the town as a party be referred to LNA as due to the coronavirus, our subcommittee, including LNA, have not met, consider the matters which appear on this evening's agenda, which otherwise would have been referred to and voted on by LNA as a condition precedent to appearing before the whole body.
Okay, I need a second for that motion.
Jason Mauer, second.
Any discussion on the motion? Then I'm going to call for a roll call vote. I call for a roll call vote on the motion to suspend rules, uh, rule... Okay, Dee Dee Martin?
Dee Dee Martin, aye.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And myself, Enid Lapellis. The motion pass, uh, aye. The motion passes nine to zero. Public hearing. First today, we have a public hearing on our agenda. At this time, I will open the second public hearing on the fiscal year 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program. At this time, I will ask First Electman Kellogg to assist me in moderating this public hearing. Mr. Kellogg?
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd be happy to introduce this and moderate the public hearing. As Chairman Lapellis stated, this is the second public hearing on the fiscal year 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, and specifically the Small Cities Housing Rehabilitation Program, which provided 0% interest loans through the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development and administered through the State of Connecticut Department of Housing. This is the second public hearing, which is a requirement to close out this program, the 2017 Grant Program, and in order to seek citizen input on the program. As I think many will recall, in 2017, the town contracted with Lisa Loan Associates to manage the program. A report, I asked for a report, which is in your packet tonight, from Lisa Loan Associates about the program. You'll recall that Monroe was awarded up to $400,000 in loans to distribute according to the terms of the program. As you can see in the report, the total funds that were expended were $330,000 over seven different projects out of the 11 eligible projects that were submitted out of 19 applications. The projects included various need-based rehabilitation and safety improvements ranging from HVAC, electrical upgrades, roofing, lead paint removal, septic repair, plumbing repair, et cetera. It's all in the report there. There's approximately $235,000 that will be available for redistribution once, or as those seven projects... In other words, once the funds are returned upon title change to the home, those liens get released upon return of the, of the loan, and the money gets reprogrammed. There is no action for Town Council to take this evening other than conducting this public hearing. So with that, I will ask now that if anyone from the public wishes to speak, to provide input specifically on the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program for the Town of Monroe, please indicate your desire to speak at this time, and please remember to unmute your mic prior to speaking. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this public hearing portion? And I will ask one more time, anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing portion for the second public hearing of the 2017 Fiscal Year 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program. Hearing none, Madam Chair, I would turn this back over to you and suggest that it would be appropriate to close the public hearing at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will now close the public hearing and move on to the rest of our agenda. Consent calendar. Are there any objections to me passing the consent calendar as presented? If none, I hereby pass the consent calendar as presented. For communications, I hereby ask that the communications items A through T be referenced in the minutes of the meeting. Public participation. At this time, I will ask Mr. Kellogg to assist me in facilitating the next item on the agenda, public participation. Mr. Kellogg, do you see anybody?
I would be happy to do that for you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there's anyone in the public who wishes to speak during the public participation portion, please indicate your desire to speak. Please remember to unmute your microphone prior to speaking.
Electman Kellogg, I actually have a public participation as a member of the public to give in tonight.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public participation?
And that's Jason Mauer, I think, right?
Yep, hold on. I was gonna see if there's anyone else first, Enid, and then we'll... Okay, hearing on, it seems like Jason is the sole person, so... Madam Chair, I, back to you, or open the mic for Jason.
Go ahead, Mr. Mauer.
Jason Mauer, 44 Staple Ridge Road. Just wanted to bring to the council's attention as a committee member on Think Pink Monroe that Think Pink will be starting its second annual October Think Pink Monroe, starting on October 1st. We have a lot of things planned, considering that we have to do things a little bit differently this year, and we're concentrating more on awareness and information than on fundraising, though we are still doing some fundraising, including some restaurant takeout nights, where restaurants will be doing 10% of their proceeds from both dine-in and takeout on given nights, as well as certain stores around town donating portions of their proceeds on given days or throughout the month, as well as a few different items to sell, including car magnets, window clings, and bracelets. But the first thing coming up is October 1st. We will be doing, on the Town Green, a Think Pink Balooza opening night. We are both live streaming it on the Think Pink Facebook page, as well as having in-person. Part of having in-person and our partners from across the sound helping us out with it was to follow all state guidelines, so masks will be mandatory, there will be temperature checks, and six feet distances between any households will all be enforced, but we'll have a short ceremony through... I know First Electman Kellogg was planning to be there and to speak, as well as a couple of other speakers throughout the evening. And the other item is going to be a sort of closing ceremonies. In the last week, we're yet to set the exact date that, on the Monroe Green, the one that's owned by the churches, we will be doing a luminary of hope at some point, which, like I said, it will come in that last week as sort of a closing ceremony. And throughout the month, on different days, the different days, we will have Facebook interactive Facebook posts, including things such as Tasty Tuesday, which is going to be posting healthy recipes that are great for cancer patients; Thoughtful Thursdays, where we're posting informational posts; Supportive Saturdays, where we're supporting our businesses in Monroe that are supporting Think Pink; Step Up Sundays, where it's Lilia Willis with Bliss Yoga is going to be doing exercise videos for everybody. So there's going to be something posted every single day. Wear Pink Wednesdays, don't forget to wear pink on your Wednesdays and post your photos. So if anybody on the council wishes to be involved with any of those different activities, please let us know, and also just keep an eye out on the Facebook page to know what's going on. And that also goes for everybody in the town as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Going on to appointments. Item A, Resolution 20-94, to consider an act upon a resolution approving the appointment of Robert Westlin to 30, uh, 30 Rodeo Drive to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term ending November 22, 2021. I will ask Mr. Rooney, please introduce the motion.
Thanks, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion to appoint Robert Westlin of 30 Rodeo Drive from Planning and Zoning Commission, filling his agency left by the late William Porter, for a term ending November 22, 2021.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, uh, a discussion. Rooney, would I discuss anything?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Robert is a 35-year resident in Monroe. Robert served Monroe for three years on EDC. He currently serves on planning and zoning as an alternate. His experience on EDC coupled with his elected position as a P&amp;Z alternate make him an excellent choice for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Hearing no one, I'm going to have a roll call vote for the resolution. Dee Dee Martin?
Dee Dee Martin, aye.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And myself, Enid Lapellis, aye. The motion passes by vote nine to zero. Okay. Uh, there are no other regular reports from our subcommittee, so we will go on to Action Item G and ask the First Electman for his update. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As provided to you earlier today, in your packet, there's a written report. Kind of hit the important highlights. First, COVID update. As of today, we continue to have 153 cases in Monroe. No new cases since September 17th. That's obviously excellent news. However, I caution that we would certainly anticipate that there will be additional cases, as we're seeing in the rest of the state. Today, actually, the state did release... They're not massive numbers, but certainly an increased number of hospitalizations, more than we've seen in recent, recent weeks. So that was certainly concerning, and we continue to monitor that. But as I said, Monroe remains at 153, which is great. The state did announce the Phase 3 reopening. As I'm sure all of you have heard already, multiple changes that are involved there in terms of our businesses. Of particular note, restaurants being able to increase 75% capacity indoors. I will note that the town continues and will continue to allow the outdoor seating as long as the weather cooperates. So that is also a, an option for those restaurants. There will remain a prohibition on the state level for bars and nightclubs, however. Private social gatherings are also going to increase capacity up to 150, 150 outdoors. Private residences are, although kept at 25, indoors, and commercial establishments are going up to 100 people or 50% of capacity. And then there's increased capacity for religious gatherings as well. With that, you know, the Monroe team, I've been discussing with our emergency management team here how we're going to continue to expand our in-person access to services as we approach Phase 3. So I will be, will be working on that, and we've already started working that. We'll continue working on that. We will be announcing some changes in the future to continue to expand in-person services as we have done so steadily. Through the State Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, we've been securing additional products, which will be distributed through our food pantry. So we have, ranging anywhere from a pallet of soap that we've been able to procure for needy Monroe residents, as well as, we'll be starting this month with boxes of fresh food once a week through the month of October. That's going to be provided through a Department of Agriculture program called Farm to Family Food Box. As a result of the pandemic, the Save Our Stepney Task Force has contacted me and wanted me to relay to this council as well that they have decided to postpone the Blue Trees Project until the spring of 2022. I obviously spoke with Mr. Leniker about this in the, in the previous days and a couple of weeks, and he did bring that back, have a discussion with Save Our Stepney Task Force. Their primary desire is to ensure that they can get, you know, full community engagement without the, hopefully without the restrictions that COVID have put in place, and so they have made that decision to move it out a year. I am working with, to address a couple of questions from the last Town Council meeting, I am working with the team on the Halloween question that Ms. Aguilar asked. I know CDC came out with some guidelines. We are still awaiting school Connecticut guidelines from Governor Lamont's office. As you know, Connecticut does have a different experience here versus the rest of the country, so I think we want to understand what the state perspective is going to be on this. But we are hopeful that we will be able to find safe ways to conduct Halloween activities, or celebrations, I should say, safely and within guidelines, and we are working on some ideas in that regard, so more to come on that. And we are working closely with the Youth Commission as well, as they historically have been the organizers of one of the popular events, Trick or Trunk. And in regards to the question regarding volunteering for elections, I have discussed this with both the registrar of voters and the town clerk. The registrar of voters particularly received numerous, numerous volunteer inquiries, so they have a lot of individuals looking to help out. The town clerk has also received some, but the registrar of voters considerably. The registrar of voters is maintaining a list of individuals willing to volunteer, and to the extent that they have activities or things that they can do to support the elections, they will be contacting them and letting them know how they can help. And in regards to the question on elected officials, yes, you can volunteer at a polling place, however, you cannot be paid. Moving on, I wanted to just highlight and summarize the grants that we've been discussing recently. There are several grants on tonight's agenda, many of which are for repeat programs, but they total over $125,000 in local funding. So there was nearly $10,000 in the Emergency Management Performance Grant for emergency management, just over $18,000 for the Distracted Driving High Visibility Enforcement Grant for the Police Department, two grants through the Connecticut Agency on Aging Older Americans for Community and Social Services. That's for $6,000 for the caregiver assistance program, $18,000 for the Senior and Disabled Transportation Program. And then coming up under New Business is a grant of almost $74,000 over two and a half years for the Health Department, specific for COVID-19. There's two business promotion events that our Economic Development Commission is involved in. One is going to be called Autumn in Monroe. This is somewhat kind of in lieu of Restaurant Week this year. They are going to promote a slightly different program in light of the pandemic. And again, it's going to be called Autumn in Monroe in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. It will promote all participating Monroe businesses during the month, or during the season, I should say. The businesses will be able to select whatever unique or special products, services, offerings that they, they have, and it will provide an opportunity for free promotion and through social media and assistance with, from both the agency and the chamber to get that information out, to promote our businesses and encourage Monrovians to shop local during the, during the season. And then secondly, is a scarecrow, scarecrow contest. In partnership with the Monroe Parks and Recreation Department, we will be providing businesses the opportunity to register for one of some pre-designated areas at Wolf Park, where the businesses will be able to display their own custom scarecrow that they get to design to advertise their business. Proceeds will go to Community Social Services for grants for need-based Monroe children to attend our Summer Fun Days camp next season. And then last, there was a request at the last meeting for a summary of the Board of Finance discussion regarding the Board of Ed investigation. So what I have done in the written update is provided a, an extra... The minutes of that meeting are up on the website, but for your convenience, I have cut and paste that portion, that entire section of the minutes, and it's attached to that report as well. So that is all I have this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Kellogg?
Madam Chairman? Yes, Dee Dee Martin? Yep. I'd just like to ask the selectmen, as I look through the minutes from the last meeting, there are a number of questions that were asked during your presentation, all of which were answered, probably, but none of those questions were included in the minutes at all. Is any particular reason for that?
If I was to, I am not aware of why that would be. I'd have to, I mean, I think we've, you've already covered the minutes in the consent calendar, but certainly I don't think there's any reason why we could not look into that and prepare a, you know, amended minutes for you to consider at the, at your next council meeting, for that meeting. But yes, I do recall there were several questions that I answered, and if they're not in the minutes, I will follow up with the clerk after, you know, or I will have myself or Kat follow up with the clerk and have those, you know, have a proposed amendment prepared for you for next meeting, if you'd like.
All right, I would appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
This is totally sort of babyish on my part. When I read the minutes, it looked like you did all of those formal things at the beginning, you know, the, the, using your mute phone, all that. It's not important, just laugh, because I do all that every time, and whether the clerk was, just figured you did it. I wasn't going to mention all that. Martin brought the other point up. You'll see it says, "I passed a meeting after the pledge allegiance over to Mr. Kellogg," and everything, you know, was all the stuff. The formality, not important. I wouldn't have mentioned, this is Martin didn't mention, her stuff.
Okay, so I will, I will ask the, I will ask the, I'll ask the clerk to review the recording of the meeting and amend the minutes, or propose an amendment of the minutes in that regard as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, going on to, there's no unfinished business tonight, so going on to New Business, Item A, Resolution 20-95, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding the American National Red Cross License Training Provider Agreement. I will ask Mr. O'Rourke to introduce the motion.
I move that the resolution, the hereby adopted Resolution Number 20-Number 95, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, the First Electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on the behalf of the Town of Monroe the American National Red Cross License Training Provider Agreement and any associated documents by and between the American National Red Cross for the Licensed Training Provider Agreement.
I, I need a second to this motion. Do I have a second?
Jonathan Formicella, second.
Okay, Jonathan Formicella, second. Mr. Kellogg, start the discussion, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as I'm sure the council's aware, the Parks and Rec Department provides a lot of American Red Cross certification courses, ranging from first aid, CPR, swimming, et cetera. That, in order to provide those certification courses, we need to be a licensed training provider for the Red Cross. We are due for a, I'm told we are due for a new agreement. These are three-year agreements. It has been provided for you in the package. As you imagine, these are very standard, although lengthy, very standard Red Cross agreements. They provide all the training centers. It's been reviewed by our town attorney, you have his letter of opinion in your package as well. Beyond that, I know Director Missy Orros is on the call as well, if you have any further questions about those programs or how these classes are conducted. But again, I think this is a standard agreement from the Red Cross to provide training.
Any other discussion questions for Mr. Kellogg on this resolution? Okay. I'm calling for a roll call vote on the resolution. Dee Dee Martin?
Dee Dee Martin, aye.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed.
And Ena Lapelis, aye. The motion passes nine to zero. Item B, Resolution 20-96, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding epidemiology and laboratory capacity, ELC cooperative agreement. I'll ask Mr. O'Rourke to please introduce the motion.
I move that the resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution Number 20-96, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, the First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the epidemiology, laboratory capacity cooperative agreement, and any associated documents by and between the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health for COVID-19 funding.
Thank you. Do I have a second to this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay. Mr. Kellogg, discussion, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned earlier in my report, we have the opportunity to receive just under $74,000 from the Department of Public Health for a 30-month COVID-19 grant to support the Monroe Health Department. There are, as you can see from the agreement, there's a wide range of activities that the grant can support. For our application, the Monroe Health Department and our Director of Health, Nancy Brawl, is seeking to utilize these funds specifically to expand on a temporary basis our public health nursing capacity, which will immediately assist in the efforts under contact tracing, case investigation, and future vaccination clinics for COVID-19. It will be $29,000, probably $2,000 in the first year alone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Further discussion from the town council?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to note, someone is unintentionally hitting buttons on their phone, so it's beeping quite a bit. Thank you. Go ahead, Madam.
Okay, so no more discussion? So I'm going to call for a roll call vote on the resolution. Dee Dee Martin?
Dee Dee Martin, aye.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed.
And Ena Lapelis, aye. The motion passes by a nine to zero vote. Item C, Resolution 20-97, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding professional services agreement with Antonazi Associates PC for the Town Hall Security Door Project. Mr. O'Rourke, please introduce the motion.
I move that the resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution Number 20-97, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, the First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the professional services agreement and any other documents by and between Antonazi Associates PC for the Town Hall Doors Project.
Do I have a second to this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, Mr. Kellogg, discussion, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have an outstanding project to improve the security of Town Hall relative to certain exterior doors and access controls. Our Public Works Department and Technology Department have been preparing this project for implementation, and our next step is to engage an architectural firm to finalize design and prepare some documents so that we can bid out the contract portion of the project. We've selected Antonazi Associates based upon a prior RFP that was conducted by another community, simply to evaluate pricing consistent with our purchasing policy, although the scope of this effort is well under the bid threshold for the services that Antonazi would be performing, but just to do our due diligence on pricing. Our town attorney has provided, actually prepared the attached agreement, along with his letter of opinion, and I know that, I believe Mr. Nowacki is also on the line if there's any further questions on the project itself, but the agreement is before you, so we can move forward.
Do I have any questions for discussion? I think it's Jason, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Jason Mauer, just one very quick question, and I know it's under the bid threshold, which is great, just wanted to also make sure and have on the public record, the bid as is, does that fit within the budget that we've set forth for this, for the project as a whole, and how we expected this portion to be costing?
Yes. The entire project is currently anticipated to be within the budgetary amount. Obviously, we have to get the business for the door construction piece, but we do know that the access controls, which, that will be a sole provider because it has to fit within our existing security control system, so it can only perform by one vendor. We know that that is within the budgetary scope, so we anticipate that when these, even with the Antonazi agreement, when we get the construction bids in, we expect the project to be within the budgetary amount.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So I'm going to call for a roll call vote on this resolution. Dee Dee Martin?
Dee Dee Martin, aye.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed.
And Ena Lapelis, aye. The motion passes by a nine to zero vote. I don't, hoping, Mr. Kellogg, I don't think we need a public, a second public participation because the only person, the first one was Jason. Do I have to ask him if he has any more questions?
We need to ask if anyone who is currently on, who may not have spoken earlier, or who may have joined in the meantime, if they wish to participate in second public participation.
Okay, so, anyone? Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Anyone? So hearing no one, the public participation is complete. There being no further business, I hereby declare this meeting adjourned at 8:40 PM. Thank you very much.